Oh, sorry. That's been our protocol throughout the times of our work sessions. We're here to learn as much as anything and openly discuss these issues. And we do know that there's a big interest in the calendar tonight. So we'll listen carefully and then we've, I know I've received many emails about the issue. And we also look forward to, if you want to speak to the board directly on Monday night, there'll be ample time allocated for that. I would remind you that there's a three-minute time limit per speaker. So be prepared, if you do come to speak, to speak to the point fairly quick, because three minutes goes pretty quick when you're talking. So, but we want to hear what you have to say and what your opinions are. And we want to listen to all the issues. But tonight, we're here to learn from our administration and our folks that have done the different issues. And our agenda tonight does include the proposed calendar. And I'm not sure if Mr. Rogers was unable to come. For what reason, I don't know. But anyway, board members, I appreciate your attendance tonight. And we'll start with Ms. Gardner.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I am clearly not the main event tonight. I'm just opening up. And we are in our budgeting season. And we went over the funding formula with the finance committee at a meeting held earlier this month. And Dr. Garrett asked, I just reviewed it with the full board. As you know, we are going into year seventeen eighteen, so we'll be in our third and final year of the current funding formula that we're under. And we tweaked that, the formula was tweaked a couple of years ago because our enrollment was declining so rapidly. Prior to the formula that we're in now, they would use our current year ten-day ADM. Because our enrollment was declining, the decision was made that we would use a look-back, which is very similar to how the state allot. They take the best one of two for sixteen seventeen, and that's what they're going to build our seventeen eighteen budget on. So it's more an alignment of that. So I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about that formula and what we're looking at for next year. There's two components to the formula. The first is to take the prior three years, this year sixteen seventeen fifteen sixteen and fourteen fifteen, and look at the percent increase each year of our per pupil appropriation. Take those three percent increases, average, add them up, and average them. And Dr. Hardy's right there, and I know she would do a backflip right now. She heard me talking that kind of math. Anyway, real math is just funniest. It's just funny. So if you will, the last three years, our percent increase was in total six point two one percent. If you divide that by three, you get two point oh seven percent. So we multiply this year's current per pupil appropriation of two thousand twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents times the two point seven percent, and you get an approximate forty-one dollars and eighty-five cents more per student for next year. So that will give us a two thousand and sixty-four dollar per pupil appropriation. And again, on the ADM side is a look-back. So we've got our money, two thousand sixty-four dollars. And then what they're going to do, they're going to take our ten-day, Haywood County Schools' ten-day ADM, which is seventy-one thirty-eight for this year. And then these numbers down through here are where we're paying, these are brick-and-mortar charters, and this is what we're averaging this year. So with our ten-day ADM and the brick-and-mortar charters, the total ADM is seven thousand five hundred and eleven. We have twenty virtual charters that we're paying this year. And those folks don't get the full two thousand twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents. They get seven hundred and ninety dollars per student. So if you take the seventy-five eleven, that number right here, times this number right here, we're anticipating having that number right there, fifteen million five hundred and eighteen thousand five hundred and four dollars. Now, the amount, that's not all for Haywood County Schools to spend. We're projecting that what we will be paying out to charters is just going to be just under nine hundred thousand dollars next year. And where we get that number is from where we're averaging over here, all of these numbers, plus fifty-two more students because Shining Rock Academy is a growing charter, and they'll be bringing on another grade next year. And so we're going to, we're just assuming they'll fill it up, which is fifty-two. And so that's where we get this eight hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So going into our budgeting season, we know that Haywood County Schools has about fourteen million six hundred thousand to work with to create next year's budget. And the top of the page is really just information. You know, I thought it was interesting. It shows our county appropriation in total, and how much of that appropriation each year has gone out to charters. Any questions?
I didn't hear carefully, I didn't listen carefully, let's put it that way. We're in the third year.
Seventeen eighteen will be our third year.
It's our third year. So we'll be possibly renegotiating that next year.
Yes, sir. And, you know, that'll be something, in my opinion, that'll need to be looked at. Because if we've kind of bottomed out, this is a great formula if your enrollment's declining. But if you're kind of bottomed out, that might not be the best formula. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And I can show you how that looks this year, if you want me to. I'm prepared, but I don't want to take up any more time than I need to.
I'd like to see.
Okay. I'll be able to show you. So this is this year's actual. Again, this year's allotment was based on two thousand twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents as our per pupil appropriation, and it was based on last year's numbers. So that was for our ten-day ADM, seven thousand one hundred and eighty-eight, Shining Rock, two twenty-five, and you can see all the way down there, through there. So we got, for seven thousand four hundred and thirty-four kids, we got two thousand twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents apiece. Plus, we were given seven, seventy-nine hundred for ten virtual charters. And then I've added in the additional ALC allotment, even though that's not part of that formula, but we're getting it from the county. So we're going to put that as part of our allotment. So let's take our actual numbers over here. This was our ten-day ADM. We came in at seventy-one thirty-eight. We did not have a big drop. If that number had come in at sixty-nine hundred, this would have been a sweet deal. It would have been great. When you add our ten-day ADM, what we're averaging, and that comes up to seventy-five eleven. So if you take seventy-five eleven times the per pupil appropriation of two thousand twenty-two dollars and fifteen cents, twenty virtual charters at seven ninety, we're a little short by a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And like I said, if our numbers had dropped, if you'll recall, from fourteen fifteen to fifteen sixteen, our numbers were sliding very rapidly, one hundred and fifty to one hundred, two hundred students each year. But this year, we dropped by fifty. So that'll be something that probably the board will want to try to take into consideration. You know, do we think we've leveled off? Or any questions?
I don't hear any questions. Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Next, we have Ms. Geno.
Okay, so while Angie is pulling up the PowerPoint, I wanted to just give you a little bit of the process of how this calendar came to me and to the calendar committee. So the calendar committee meets in every September to develop the calendar for the following year. And in September, we met, the calendar committee met, and we composed a draft that is similar to the current year calendar that we in, that's a hundred and eighty-day count. Well, after that, we, the calendar committee took the draft, back to their school, got some input about the days. And in the meantime, from a middle school group alike meeting, I was contacted and asked if the calendar committee would consider looking at the hourly option. And I said, well, just get me the information, because I don't know anything about the hourly option, what it includes, what it doesn't include. And Teresa Cook, who's the testing coordinator, had that information. And so I asked her to come and speak with Dr. Nolte and I, just so I could get the, I guess, the general overview of what that calendar insists of. So she did. And then I asked her also to come back to the October calendar committee meeting so that she could explain it to the calendar committee, and then they could decide whether they wanted to look at that option or continue with the hundred and eighty-day count. So that was, that was how we arrived at where we're at. And the calendar committee did decide that they wanted to further look at the hourly option. So, and after the third and fourth meeting, the hourly option is what the calendar committee decided they wanted to recommend. So I do want to say this before we start too, that if the legislature changes the calendar flexibility and then allows us to start five days earlier, either option would be fine, because we will have enough days then that it won't, that this option won't matter, and the other option, we can combine them both, and we would be, we would be okay. So I emailed all three of our legislators and asked them if they thought that that might be an option. And I heard back from two of them and saying that they hoped that it would be brought back up. And then Dr. Garrett received an email requesting a letter from Haywood County Schools, asking, letting them know why we would like the calendar flexibility. So Dr. Garrett and I composed a letter and sent it to representative personnel, and she asked for the same among all her counties that she represents. And she is going to take that to the floor. So that's where, that's where that's at right now.
I think it might be important for this board to compose a similar letter. I mean, we can't take action on it tonight, but Monday night, we might want to propose something similar to that, and then we can vote on whether we want to send a letter down there endorsing that position, which we've always taken in the past, to add some, to give us full flexibility on the calendar, so we could start when we wanted to and end when we wanted to.
Right. If we have the calendar flexibility, then we would have the flexibility to do.
Do what we need to do.
And employ for however long. Okay. So as we go through this, if you have any questions along the way, just let me know. And I'll just go through the, what I'm included in the PowerPoint. And we emailed a draft out to you, so you kind of had a chance to look at what's included. But as we go along, just let me know if you have any questions. I do want to tell you too, that after the calendar committee decided that they wanted us to look at the hourly option, I gathered all the information that I could. I spoke with numerous staff, numerous counties around us that have, that do the hourly, that hourly calendar, and got a bunch of information together. I spoke to seven different staffs, and I also spoke to the principals twice and gave them the same information that I'm giving you, basically, about the calendar. Okay. So the first slide is the calendar law and the state law. And what's interesting enough is in this law, everyone in the state is actually on an hourly calendar. Because if you read the law, it says it must have a minimum of a hundred and eighty-five days or a thousand twenty-five hours. So everyone, I don't think there's anyone that's going the hundred and eighty-five days. So everyone is actually on the hourly calendar. They're just doing it in different ways and going different amount of days. Okay? So that's, that's the law from, from the state. And then the next, next slide is when, when the calendar committee decided that they wanted to look at this option, and we came back together for, to meet and discuss and look at how we wanted to place the days and what we wanted to call the days, I asked them to survey their staff and get a representation of what their staff wanted. And just to let you know, the calendar committee consists of a representative from each school, either a principal, a teacher, a teacher assistant. The transportation is in there. On the calendar committee, we have two. One parent, there are actually two parents, but one represents PTA, one represents the community, the school board member. Dr. Nolte and I are on the calendar committee, but we do not vote. We are just, I'm the chair, and Dr. Nolte is there to provide information that we may have based upon curriculum or whatever other questions that we have. He is usually there to help with that. So this is actually the surveys that I got back, and I got a hundred percent back from each school. And this is how many people completed the survey and what the results of the survey Is there any questions about that?
You said a hundred percent from all the schools.
I got a hundred percent from all the schools. Now, that doesn't mean that a hundred percent.
From each school, but not a hundred percent of people participating.
Right. I do, I can't, you know, we can't control who answers and who doesn't. I just asked them to send it out. This is what I got back. Does that make sense? So like at Bethel Elementary, twenty-one people completed the survey.
How many possible people could you have complete the survey, Dr. Garrett?
Okay, that's about, what do we have, Jason, eleven fifty-two total?
About eleven hundred employees total.
Roughly fifty percent response.
You've got about five hundred and thirty-five teachers, classroom teachers.
So you sent the survey to the school, you let the principal decide who they was giving the survey to?
I sent it to the calendar, calendar committee rep, the same way as we've done in all of the.
And then the calendar committee rep decide who they is going to give the survey to?
I also talked to the principals at the principal meeting and asked them to get with their calendar committee rep to get the survey out and talk to them.
Okay. So you got just a little bit better than fifty percent.
A little bit more than fifty. So the next slide is just an overview and some advantages and disadvantages of this calendar. And you can see that, like the law says, we have to have a thousand twenty-five hours completed by the end of the year. And just so you guys know that, what the State Department asked me to turn in at the end of the year is how many hours, how many hours the school that had the least amount of hours. So for example, it's usually Central Haywood, just based upon their schedule. They usually have the least amount of instruction, and I have to send in how many they went. So everybody else went above that, which they always go more than a thousand twenty-five. But that's what they asked me. And then they asked me for how many days we missed due to snow. So that's the only thing that I turned in to the State Department. They don't ask me for the calendar, and they don't ask me for how we use our days. They just ask me for the number of hours completed. So back to this, the, an overview, the testing would occur in the last either ten or five days of school, which would be in this calendar, between May fourteenth and May twenty-fifth. May twenty-ninth through June first would be used for remediation, retesting, enrichment, camps, end-of-the-year programs, yearbook day, classroom celebrations, what, it could be used for whatever that school determines to use those days for. And then every school must have at least a six-hour and twenty-minute instructional day. And I think just about all of ours do already. I mean, I think some of the high schools and maybe the middle schools maybe have to tweak theirs a little bit, but our elementary schools are pretty much on track with, with six hours and twenty minutes already. So some advantages to this calendar is that all assessments would be completed before Memorial Day. There would be two full weeks available for completion of the thousand twenty-five hours and the last day of instruction. Snow hours can be made up during the last two weeks of instruction. Teachers and staff are employed and available for remediation, retesting, summer school, and enrichment. And that's an advantage, I think, because now the last workday and the last student day are essentially the same day. I think there's one mandatory workday at the end of the year, and so you have to pay your people to come back. Well, and with this calendar, your teachers and teacher assistants would already be Students who do not pass the EOG or EOCs have the opportunity to retest. And middle schools and high schools can retest. The disadvantages of this calendar are that the cafeteria staff and bus drivers have the potential to lose pay based on snow days. The AP classes at the high school level are more compressed. There could be less instructional days because of snow days. And then the cafeteria may serve less students on the remediation and enrichment days. Okay. Any questions about any of that?
Thank you.
As far as the, like the early colleges, will that, students, will that be an advantage for them? Will they be closer to their, to the, it's totally different still?
It won't be, their calendar's completely different. If we get calendar flexibility, that's, that's an advantage. But right now, they're on a different calendar anyway, so it really doesn't affect that.
They're on the Haywood Community College.
So it didn't help for her?
There's still going to be some overlap there on Christmas with starting new classes and finishing.
We try, we've tried the last few years to get spring break and fall break and winter break as close to theirs as we can.
How many snow days would, would you say potential to lose pay days? How, what's the number?
It's in here. I've got our history of the snow days on the next, I think it might be the next slide, actually, but.
I think he's asking about the career in college promise, right? They're the ones that's crossing.
You mean the duly enrolled kids?
Yes. They're the ones that's crossing whether they're starting their college classes and their high school classes.
Well, and that's at the advantage of the calendar flexibility, which we're asking.
Because the early college is actually on the college schedule, right?
Yeah, let me, let me address that. I think the early college, it will be a non-factor. They're not better off with the traditional hundred eighty days or the hourly. The career in college promise students are really only working on those classes when the college is in session. The college semester is eighty days, and hours has typically been ninety or thereabout. Sometimes we'll have an eighty-eight day semester because of snow or something like that. So I don't think it will impact those career in college promise people much, if at all, because we usually start high school about the time that those classes are getting started. Sometimes they'll have to come in and set up a computer for a kid before our actual first day, because our first day's not till the nineteenth or later. It won't impact second semester at all for the career in college promise people in terms of that class.
So my AP classes also, they were a year-long classes, right? And now they're one semester, what I was told?
No, they're semesters.
One semester?
Yes. And I think the reason they're talking about the compress is you would have less time if you go with the hourly than you would with the hundred and eighty-day calendar.
Okay. Typically, what you've done with AP is that test is usually in February, February or March. That test is usually, I should know that date, but I don't. But it's usually early in the second semester. And what we've done in the past is offer it first semester and then remediate them or get them ready, or offer it year-long.
May.
Is it May?
May.
It's in May. It's before the school year ends.
AP exam.
The AP exam.
It's usually the first week of May.
Thank you. That's all right. I'm easy to correct. But it's usually in May. And what they'll, what they did in the past was they would front it with some similar class and then teach AP second semester. Or at Tuscola, they taught it all year long, because that was just their schedule. On the hourly schedule, they're going to probably lose the time associated with snow days before the test. Thank you.
Okay. On the next slide is our history of how many days we missed due to snow. And we've broken it down by month, so you can see that it's all over the place, from six to five to thirteen, but we average eight. But this year that we're in right now, we missed three. So.
If we continue, say we only miss another couple of days, is that, do we lose the waiver?
We don't lose the waiver. It's an average.
You have to have, you, it's, you miss eight days, four of the last ten years? So I think we're pretty safe on the waiver unless they change it, because we have eight, eight, thirteen, eight, and a two and a thirteen. So we're.
Say, Dr. Garrett, you probably need to cancel school tomorrow.
Yeah, we're, I think we're good on the waiver, because if you miss eight, four of the last ten years.
Again, if we're under flexibility, we won't need the waiver.
Exactly.
And it wouldn't matter at that point in time.
Any questions about that?
Now, they're already, the cafeteria workers, if you go with by hour, they're already losing five days to begin with.
What do you mean? Hold a calendar where you're named.
We're actually.
If you go to the hour.
We're actually, they lost five days about two years ago.
But you're saying if they went to a calendar now, if we missed no snow days, their pay, their days, everything's going to be.
Well, I'm going to go through that. But if we miss no snow days, there's actually a hundred and eighty-one days in this hourly calendar.
So they've gained.
She just said if we didn't miss snow days, we'd have a hundred and eighty-one. Jason asked me a question.
Okay. Any other questions about the history?
One me.
So the next slide is what's happening around us. And you notice that the counties with the asterisk are, when we talked, when I called and talked to those counties, they are, the goal is a hundred and eighty days. They decide in the year, depending on the weather, if they have a really bad winter, then they're not, they may not make up some days. So they, that's part of the flexibility that you have with doing the thousand twenty-five hours. But you can see down through there, and I won't read those to you unless you just have a question about who does what. And I put Asheville City, I think, no, I took that off. But Asheville City, I had a hard time getting a definite answer from them, so what I concluded when I counted the days was that they're on the hourly.
It's right there in the menu.
Yeah, I have one where I had the, okay. The next slide are the counties with the calendar waiver. There are fourteen counties. Obviously, I didn't put Haywood up here, because we get the calendar waiver, but the other thirteen are there. And with Transylvania, you probably have heard that they do what is called a virtual school. So on their snow days, they, the kids can log in online and do instruction. Their kindergarten, kindergarten through fifth grade do what's called blizzard bags. And so the teachers, so with the kids, and they do count some of those, some of that time towards their instructional hours. The teachers also have to log in online and do some work with the kids. Okay. The next slide is the top fifteen school districts by performance and what they do. And then you can see that the ones in blue are the, they also have the calendar. they also have the calendar waiver and are in the top fifteen percent, or the top fifteen school districts. Any questions there?
Looks to me like according to that, top performing schools are still on a daily calendar. Get more instructional time.
But they don't have the weather issues.
They don't have the weather, weather.
If you look on the other calendar, with the count, with the weather.
Yeah, but we've been always, we've always gotten a waiver, and I don't foresee that changing. And like I say, the state's gonna look at this hourly deal, I mean, flexibility. That's all right, just comment.
It looks, it's about, even if you add them up, it's about even.
It's seven, seven.
Seven, seven.
We'll be the tiebreaker.
Oh, boy.
But I do think it's, I told Dr. Garrett and Mr. Rogers, I think that, you know, for, for Haywood County to have the, the weather issues that we have and still be in the top ten percent, we're, we're we're doing something right.
Just a question, you may not know the answer, and maybe something we need to look into is Yancey, Watauga, Transylvania, have they addressed the issue of possibility of some of their employees losing hours? Hey, and how did they address that?
The, the counties that I talked to, they were hourly, and the way that they were addressing, for example, the hours that they would lose in Madison, I'm just gonna use Madison, is because of their snow days. Well, they were allowing their cafeteria and bus drivers to work those days without kids and paying them out of I'm not exactly sure what funds, but they were paying them
It had to be a local.
They were paying them to work.
Is this the first year that these counties have been hourly, or is
I don't know. I can find out, but I don't know.
I would like to know how long they've been on an hourly schedule.
Yancey.
Of the top fifteen, anyway.
Of the top fifteen, only four of them face weather issues.
Yancey, Watauga, uh, some Transylvania. They're the only ones that get the waiver.
Anybody else have any questions? Not all you had?
On that side.
Ms. Valerie?
We've got a few more to go. Just a few more.
Oh, I know. I've been through the slides.
Um, so when I did the survey, I also, if there were questions about a calendar on the survey, I included those in the frequently asked questions that I sent back out to the calendar committee to share with their staff. And these are just some of the questions that I, that I got, and I want, I'll just go through them, and then we'll look at the calendar, and I'll if you have any questions, I'll explain that to you as well. Does this calendar, or change the year for employees? And, and in this question, they mean certified employees. So no, it does not. The teachers and the principals still have to work their two hundred and fifteen day contract. Does it change for the graduation date? Again, no, because you schedule graduation after you test anyway. Can students go to a school of choice during the way, week of May twenty-eighth through June first? And no students would stay at their home school. What will the remediation and enhancement days look like? And again, that would be determined by each school, so I would imagine that most of them will take advantage of the re- remediation and retesting. But other than that, it would be to that, that school, that principal, school improvement team to decide. One of the advantages of this is that you have this time to work with your students on skills that they may be behind on, and you have the opportunity to work with students who are excelling. Another, well, I'll, I'll talk about that when we get to the Will cafeteria employees and bus drivers lose pay? Yes, there is a potential for them to lose pay based on how many snow days we, we miss. Um, can we make up days as well as pull from our excess hours? And again, the calendar committee usually does a weather, inclement weather plan, and that could be whatever this board decides. You can make up days, you can pull from those hours and then make up days. It would be whatever you, you decide.
Basically, if there's, if there was a workday in there, in the calendar built in, and we did miss for snow, we could take that workday away and then make that a, a regular day of class for everybody.
You can. The only thing I would, I would suggest or recommend maybe is that whatever you decide to do, you put it in the plan ahead of time. Um, I know it's easier for me looking at the calendar, and it's easier when Dr. Garrett has to decide about a weather day. If we know, okay, we're gonna pull the first two from our hours, we're gonna make up the third day. Or something to that effect, so that we have a concrete plan in place, knowing that the plan is flexible, that we may have to change it, but that there's something there written.
Some kind of guideline to go by.
Okay. Will attendance be checked on May twenty-ninth through June first? And that is still to be determined, because I think that Dr. Garrett and Dr. Malti are gonna have to meet with Teresa Cook, our testing coordinator, to get the laws and, and things about that and to determine that. Um, will the local attendance procedure change of fifteen days? No, it'll still, it'll remain the same. It won't affect attendance requirements for athletics.
Skip no day.
Oh. If we have to call a no day, close day, will that day have to be made up? And that is, yes, because you still have to work the number of days in your contract. So we would make that day up. And then will certified staff's daily hours be extended? And based on our local policy, it is, um, the length of the school day for certified staff is seven hours and thirty minutes, so that's not gonna change.
And
That's the minimum.
Skip athletics.
Oh, athletics. I've said that, I thought, but it does not change requirements for athletics. Any questions about those? Okay, so now, if you want to look at your calendar, if you wanna look at the calendar, um
You might could get one off Shared. If you wanna try to find it.
They've all got a copy in there.
Shared Jenny's calendar.
Yeah.
Go to Shared.
Okay, so if you look at the calendar, it, um, where it changes?
It's a secret.
It's in, can you get in the email?
Well, I can just talk, you've got a copy, don't you? I think all of you've got a copy in here.
The email she sent. She did send it to you. Yeah, she, she sent it by email, so can you get in the email? And pull it up in the and send it back to me.
I might have a few extra copies to pass around, but Well, we'll go through it, but if you look at the calendar on this
It's on the front of the presentation that she sent out as well.
It's on the very first page of our presentation.
All right, Brooke sent it.
Brooke sent it. Can I copy this to send it to somebody else? Brooke sent it to us.
Send it back to Angie.
Jenny sent it out as well. Brooke sent the presentation engine.
You're gonna send it to email? In a second, I'll send it to you. Here you go. Catch this. Send it to Dr. Garrett. I got you up here. So I'm sending it to you. I got yours up here. You just send it to
Work session agenda.
No, no. They're all supposed to get together and figure out a day. They weren't all Thursday. But we can line by line budget. What I asked for, but they weren't everybody's day. I said, man, you can figure out a day.
Revised calendar. Second one down.
Yes.
Think it might be planning being on the third day.
Hourly calendar draft. Not unless, it's all depending on weather, and all depends on weather.
And why am I getting an email saying we have
There's possibility.
Well, possibility shouldn't be that.
Okay, so with the calendar waiver, we can start the, um, students can start the Monday closest to August nineteenth. So that and next year will be the twenty-first. So what that has allowed is that you have more, what the calendar committee decided was to put workdays for now, in the calendar that we're in now, because we have to save so many for snow days that you can use them now, because you're not going to use all of them for snow. So you have those workdays at the beginning of the school year that you don't typically have. Okay, and then, as you go through the year, pretty much everything stays the same until you get to Christmas. Again, it allows you to test before Christmas, because you have met at least one half of the thousand twenty-five hours before Christmas, so you can test. And, and what we did, and, and what the calendar committee did was at first, they had put a fall break in this calendar, and then when we looked at the hours and saw how close it was and realized that we needed some cushion days in there for hours, that, um, they, they used only one day for fall break, so that we could have at least two to three days of a, of a cushion in our first semester. It allowed the, the spring, I mean, the Christmas break is a little longer because you're splitting the semester, so you can take that workday that we normally put in the middle of January, you could put it at the end of the, of the winter break, because your semester's already done and you've already tested. Okay? And then, spring break remained the same. And then, if you look at May, is where the biggest change is. So if we didn't miss any days for snow, we would meet our thousand twenty-five hours on May the eighth. Now, again, that's, that's something that will not be on the, on the calendar that we send out, just like it's not now, because that's something that I keep up with. And it will move if we, if we miss for days. Okay? The difference is that it will not change the end of the year. So the end of the year, the end of the school is gonna be June first. Regardless of how many days we miss, unless we have a
Thirteen, I think's what we decided.
Okay, so you're, you test on your last ten instructional days. So you could test the fourteenth through the twenty-fifth, no matter how many days we miss for snow, which is where the less instructional time comes into play, because you're not making those days up. So like now, if we miss a day in January, we make that day up in June. Okay? So we, because we're going a hundred and eighty days regardless, we make those days up in June. So then time is made up in a different, uh, a different timeframe. Instructional time is made up in a different timeframe. Okay, so, May twenty-fifth is the last instructional day. May twen- May twenty-ninth through June first is your remediation and enhancement days, which would be school days. They're school days because we want kids to come, because we want to run the cafeteria, and we want to run the school buses. Okay? The, the issue is you don't know how many kids are gonna come that day. But that's gonna be determined by what each school offers. So if each school, obviously, I'm pretty sure that the retests, remediating and retest kids are gonna be there. Um, that's generally about thirty percent.
About I think you had calculated about fifty percent for your revenues for the, on those days.
For remediation, high school is a lot lower, because
High schools
Those parents don't have to have babysitters, so their kids aren't Well, elementary school, I think you'll have a higher attendance because those parents have to work, and if their kids can go to school, then their kids are gonna go to school.
And if the middle and high schools, depending on what they offer, kids are gonna come, if they're going to have their class parties or have a yearbook signing day. And, and this is another advantage of this calendar. Right now, teachers have to use the last five, the last days of school to clean up their classroom, get their Q and folders done, and do all their records, closing out the end of the year, because they don't have any time after school's out. The last day for kids is the last day for students. So there's no time there for them to, to do that. With this calendar, they don't have to take away instructional time to do those things. They can, you can instruct all the way up until May twenty-fifth. Okay? So now, on May twenty-ninth through June first, those days are going to be, again, what the school decides. What the calendar committee and, um, has recommended is that we want as many kids to come as possible. We don't know how many that will be. And, you know, there's no really way to determine that right now.
I think the way we present it is that school would be over on June first.
Right.
Not the, not that testing would be done on May twenty-fifth, it's schools out June first. And just, you know, that's what we put out there to parents, and that's when school's gonna be out.
And, and when, you know, in our weather plan now, we put not to, just a notice, not to be aware that if you schedule something during spring break, or you schedule something the last week of school, that that could be changed due to our weather days. So I would imagine that we'll put that same kind of notice on the weather, the weather plan, or whatever calendar we do. Okay, so how this affects the cafeteria is if we don't miss any snow, we're good, but we know the reality of that is probably that we're gonna miss. So if we miss on January the seventeenth, and we don't make that day up, then the cafeteria staff loses pay for that Jan- January seventeenth, because then right now, what happens is if they, they, we have a snow day, we make it up in June, so they're getting paid for it. Make sure I'm saying this correctly, but if they miss in January, it will be out of their check in January, but it'll be made up in their end of the year.
That's correct.
So that's, that's the disadvantage for that, is
For your bus drivers.
Bus drivers and cafeteria staff, and it affects those two, those two groups of people, because those are the two groups of people that get paid when kids are there, and they're
And also, how much revenue do we lose during those days?
We have, revenue-wise, we bring in about twenty-two thousand dollars a day. So on those days, you know, if we miss up to thirteen days that don't have to be made up, that's two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that we'll lose in revenue, but then we're gonna not have the cost of labor in there, and we won't have food costs in there. So once you subtract those out, we'll still lose a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars if we were to miss up to thirteen. And last year, we ended the school year with a twenty thousand dollar, um, balance. We actually ended the year with a little bit of money last year, but if we lose that revenue in the upcoming years, it'll end in the, uh, red by about a hundred grand, and that's money that the school board will have to kick in, which and that's money that the school board will have to kick in, which is teacher salaries and everything else.
Or, I know, sitting, when I was sitting on the finance committee, every year we've had to bump up the cost of lunches to keep up with the federal reimbursement. And we're going to have to do that again for next year. So that extra would have to be considered as well. Have we looked at other ways of generating some more, you know, I know with some of the federal guidelines that we have to, you know, adhere to, are there other ways of trying to boost up revenue a little bit more?
We are selling everything we can possibly sell.
And catering.
Legally.
And we do.
Legally. Legally, legally sell, okay.
We do after school programs, summer meeting programs, you know, we try to supplement with other things, but we're selling everything we can get our hands on to sell.
They would relax some of these things about cokes and snacks and stuff like that. Then they could sell that much more.
Said $124,000 in losses for 17 days?
For thirteen, if we were to miss all thirteen.
Thirteen days.
It averages out to, if you don't include the remediation days, because I included that as a loss as well, those four days are not going to be our regular revenue because not all students will be there. But if you don't include the remediation days, we lose about $6,152 a day after you take out the expenses of labor and food. So it could go up to $79,000 that we would lose if we went up to 13.
So we're making $8,000 a day, 180 days a year. It says 13 days, right?
I'm sorry, say that again.
You're saying in 13 days, we lose $124,000.
Correct.
So if you divide 13 by 124, it's 8,000 something a day. So for 180-day school year, we make $8,000 a day, it's 1.3 million?
No, we make, in 180 days, we're bringing in on average $20,000 a day.
$20,000 a day?
Yes.
Profit?
Oh, that's...
That's not profit, that's just revenue.
That's gross receipts.
They're actually doing about 1.3 million meals a year.
See his, see what he's saying.
He's saying that we have, you said we had $124,000 profit, that if we lost that...
No, I think it's revenue versus profit.
Revenue versus, correct.
Yeah.
We have...
Says loss of revenue for remediation days.
The remediation days are those four additional days that they, we don't know that they have to come, that they may not come or not. Those are in addition to the 13, so there's really 17 days.
Child nutrition's bringing in right at 4 million a year. But then you've got expenses, food, you've got labor costs.
Equipment.
124 is revenue, potential revenue minus your expenses.
It says 294,000 minus the expenses is 124. That's eight or nine thousand dollars a day.
And Ronnie's saying that's profit the way...
That's the way this is written.
Yeah, the way that's...
The way this is written, that's profit.
The way that's written, that's $8,000 profit.
The way this is written is we're making $8,000 a day profit. If we don't make the $8,000 a day, then we have to pay them back. But if you make $8,000 a day, it's 1.3 million.
Profit.
Profit a year. That's the way this is written.
That's why...
Profit, that's profit, that doesn't take into account revenue. It's sort of a mixed bag that we're looking at here. Because in one instance, we're looking at revenue minus expense. But if we try to extrapolate it down to profit, we don't see the other side of the profit margin.
That would be profit, but then you also, I don't think she's looking at some other expenses involved.
It doesn't, their expenses for benefits are not included. That's a, what, plus to $5,000 an employee, I did not include that in those calculations. Because regardless of if they work those days or not, they're still going to keep their benefits.
It says retirement and FICA.
But not insurance.
Okay.
So that's not, insurance is not included.
I would just add, because that's what reads...
There's some questions on the...
What reads is $8,000 a day profit. It's meal math. Meal math, they want to make 200 million, we made 180 million, so they lost 20 million or something.
We have not been in the business of making money in a long time.
Well, that's where I was confused at.
I'm sorry.
So there's more expenses, okay.
Yeah, there are more expenses that are not included in that, correct.
All right.
Correct.
Yes, obvious question is, is what does it cost?
Yeah, we need to look...
What is the cost of paying someone those days? I mean, the cafeteria workers and the bus drivers, if you do, if they were to potentially lose that day, what does that cost? Do we have the funds to do that?
To make it, yeah.
That's the question.
Yeah, you got to know your profit per day.
Yeah. Well, no, there's a fixed cost of working somebody an hour.
Right.
If you take all your cafeteria workers and all your bus drivers and you pay them for eight hours, what does that cost? And do we have that kind of money to allocate for that potential loss? Is what I'm...
If you're looking to fund it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
But if you're trying to figure out how much you lose...
I'm, I've moved beyond that, I'm working...
It costs us approximately $5,500 a day to employ 70 employees that are hourly employees. So if you were to try to pick that up from a different fund somewhere, that's how much it would cost you for every snow day if you wanted to kick in that money to keep...
5,000, what now?
$5,544.
That's on your hand that we sent you.
So you're talking about fifty...
But this don't include all their other benefits, so how much...
You're already getting paid that, so that's not going to be, they're going to get those insurance benefits regardless of the number of days they're working, so that's not included in this fee.
Yeah, the insurance, if they miss one day, they're still getting that insurance for that one day if they miss. What she's talking about is just...
Just their hourly rate plus...
Now that's just the cafeteria side. What about the bus drivers?
The buses, when I asked Todd about that, we have very few bus drivers who receive benefits, but he said it would be a savings of about $4,500 a day if you did not run those buses nor pay.
These savings for not running the buses, but the employees are still losing that...
They are, absolutely.
The savings would probably...
The gas is about $1,000.
Take out $4,500 savings and pay the, pay that, them employees for the days that they miss.
Well, the gas is about $1,000 a day is what he said. And then he said for the employees, that would be about another $3,500. So his total per day would be 4,500 is what he told me, Todd.
Can you pay somebody for not working?
No, you cannot. Not unless they receive benefits, which allows them to have days.
Well, something else that was brought up about the cafeteria is also, they were not having enough time to do what they call their deep cleaning.
Deep cleaning, because they were...
The freezers, the stoves.
Do you want to talk about the cut you made in 2000?
Several years ago, we cut days from the hourly calendar for the employees. They were working the same amount of days as teachers, they had that 215-day calendar. We were losing money so fast, we had to come up with ways to trim our budget. And one of those ways was to cut the number of days they worked down to four workdays instead of having all the workdays. So now there are two work, five workdays, no, four. Two workdays at the beginning of the year, one mid-year cleanup day and then one cleanup day at the end of the year. So they do not have as much, that's correct, they do not have as much time to do scrubbing of things, deep down cleaning, scrubbing that they used to have.
During those four days, aren't, isn't there like a mandatory meeting? So are they, they're only really getting like two days to really clean?
They have time during their workday to do the everyday cleaning, but to sit down and, like, at the end of the year, they will scrub tables, gum, scrub chair legs, scrub walls, scrub, I mean, they go all out.
Two days is not...
Two times a year now.
Well, and that was my point, was if we were going to, instead of saying pay them without working, we could let them do the cleaning.
Let them have workdays.
Yeah, if, yeah, how can we build in some of those workdays back?
Yeah.
So they can do some of that cleaning that they need to be doing. And that way, they wouldn't be losing those days if we missed for snow.
Just funding the revenue to pay for that.
That's what we need to work on and look at.
Ms. Chairman, we've...
They work 205, the cafeteria folks work 200, the hourly cafeteria people work 205 days. So they work the 180 school days, holidays and annual leave days they get and then they have four workdays on top of that. So they're getting 100, 205 days.
And I don't want to muddy the water, but I, what I'm hearing y'all say, I think y'all think that a lot of these folks only work 180 student days and that may be the case for some of them. But, and Allison, please jump in and correct me, but if they work four hours or more, they earn a benefit of annual leave. So if you have a snow day on January the 17th, these folks that earn annual leave have the option of being paid for that day.
Not right now, they don't. Because it's made up.
Well, whereas that 205, but without taking it up, you can't take the annual leave benefit away.
But for next year's, what she's talking about, I think, AMG.
For, what's going on this year?
See what I'm saying? How are you going to take their benefit, their annual leave away?
Not taking annual leave.
So if they have a snow day on January 17th?
It's made up now, so it's not taken away, they're still keeping that count.
But going to an hourly calendar, I don't know. That's another piece I think we're missing here, maybe, maybe for another day.
Well, no, I'll maybe...
Mr. Rogers had a comment. Ms. Chairman, we've sort of went beyond the scope of the calendar and understanding the rules and I've tried to, over the course of the last couple of weeks, talk to as many principals and teachers and administrators and cafeteria workers as possible. And I've just sort of jotted down a few things that I want to bring to the board's attention. First of all, we have tried to create, and I think it's been the goal of this board, at least in the last two years that I'm aware of, it's been our goal to try to create an environment of continuous improvement. You know, with the model of good to great and pushing forward and trying to create the best environment of education for the students. A calendar, an hourly calendar reduces the number of contact hours that we have with each one of our students. And we all know that contact hours equals learning. You know, if you're not in front of the teacher and in instruction, then the amount of learning is impacted. And with this, you've got the possibility, and I understand it's only a possibility, of up to 13 days, but you can see in the last 10 years, we've hit 13 days a couple of times. Well, when I first thought about 13 days, I couldn't, that's two and a half weeks of instruction. Two and a half weeks that we're not seeing the kid that year. In addition to that, in this mindset of continuous improvement, there's no data that supports that going to an hourly calendar will do anything to enhance education or enhance performance of the students. So to me, it's almost like we're setting ourselves on a downward migration toward the minimum standards that we absolutely have to meet when our goal is to continually improve and give our students the best opportunity to get ahead. So that's one thought, is it just impacts continuous improvement. Second, it adds to or accentuates classroom pressure. If you think about it, there's a great impact here of taking away potentially, I know it's potential, but you take 13 days out of teaching time to the students and for the teachers to teach. We end up with a shorter time to teach, shorter time to learn, yet we've still got the same expectations. So that's just added pressure in the classroom on both the students and the teachers. Not to mention pacing guides are going to be off. The years of experience and buildup of the process each teacher goes through to administrate learning on a daily basis, they can take out their old plan books and say, "This is what we're doing this week, this is what we're doing that week." You know, that process is interrupted, so all of that has to be recreated and reorganized. Then, if you think about it in another way, we're already experiencing a high turnover rate for teachers. Do we really want to add the pressure of doing the same with a less amount of time? And not to mention what it does to the students. Now with 13 less classroom days, they're going to have to, or they're going to be expected to perform the same. So you see the downward migration, not only in our standards, but in what we expect out of our students or what we try to expect. But third, you know, if you look at the cost and personnel impact that we just talked about, according to Allison's numbers here, it could hit our bottom line. There could be a $124,000 difference. I say you're not even close. I think it's much higher than that.
It's all guess, yeah, this is a guess based on...
Because, you know, when school's over with, you've got a graduation day, you don't have an exam that day, sounds like a fishing bowl in the cream box. So I don't know that you're going to, you're going to realize a 50% sales inside the cafeteria. But, you know, if you, and you take that impact, and let's just say it's 100,000, just for rough numbers, just say. You realize we just closed the school and reduced the workforce. Now, we've got $100,000 to throw around. In addition, I'll move on from that. In addition to that, you've got the possibility of child nutrition workers and bus drivers losing those 13 days, which is in addition to a reduction from 215 days a few years ago down to 205. So it's almost as if we're piling on just a little bit. We've, we're affecting not only their pay, but also the morale of hardworking people. These people get up a whole lot earlier than I do or want to. And, you know, some of the conversations, Jim, I know you've probably heard the same thing, is, you know, they may feel, you're not, by the way, that you may feel undervalued and underpaid on the first part. Second part, I'll agree with you. And it's already difficult now to, how easy is it to find subs, Sandy? You know, we're creating this whirlwind and finally, it's, to me, this is a big decision. I mean, this is something, I've talked to a lot of principals and this is a decision to change something that's worked pretty well for 40 years. And without a lot of data, you know, with little research. And it's a big decision. And the reason it's a big decision is our job's to make sure we do what's in the best interest of children and their education. And I can't find the sport for that. It's cost prohibitive. And I think it may be premature, given, there's legislation right now talking about calendar flexibility. So I think we're early and to make a decision is, seems awful hasty to me. That's just my opinion.
But now, get me, let me get right now, the surveys that you did, and I'm not arguing with no point that you just made, none at all. I'm just trying to get my head wrapped around all this. Because we've got two different sides here. You've got cafeteria administration saying, "No, they don't want to go to the hourly." But then you've got the teachers saying, "Yes, they do."
86%.
86% of the teachers, now like I said, I'm not arguing with nothing, I'm going by survey here. You've got 86% of your teachers saying, "Let me try this. I'm still going to get the numbers and we're still going to be in the top 10%." That's what I'm getting out of the survey.
And you show me any data of the...
Well, no, I'm just saying by what the teachers are saying... Well, no, I'm just saying, by what the teachers are saying, I'm not, I'm not saying no argument there, I'm, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying your teachers are saying, give us a chance, because we're having five less days of kids that we're having to mess with. We're still going to get your numbers. Correct? That's the eighty-six, was it eighty-six percent?
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four, that your teachers are saying that they want to go to the hourly.
Employees.
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 Employee, eighty-six.
Eighty-six percent.
Eighty-four.
Some, some of those responding to the survey.
Eighty-four percent of those responded.
Which was about fifty percent.
Which was about fifty percent, but still.
And we don't know what the mix was.
Well, and that, that was one of the questions I had, and that was the first question I asked. What, who ser, who was the surveyees? I mean, was they the cafeterias or was they the?
They were from, the survey was from the calendar rep at each site.
Each, but each site, did it go to the cafeteria workers?
Did it go to all employees at each site?
That's determined by the calendar rep and the principal.
Okay.
And you don't?
Cafeteria workers, I'm going to step out my, cafeteria workers, how many of yous did the survey? Raise your hand. That's pretty big, that, that's an awful lot of cafeteria workers, and you're saying that we had eighty-four percent that's saying, yes.
I do want to say too, that when I, when I talked with the principals, I asked them to complete a survey too, through their Papa, that, I don't even know what Papa stands for. Principals and Assistant Principals Association. And so they did a survey separately, as well as the central office staff administrators that are not normally on the calendar committee. So I, I wanted to gather as much information, all-inclusive, as I could. I, you know, I can't control who does the survey and who doesn't. I send it out like any other survey we do. We get back what we get back, and this is the results that I have.
I'm just going to remind everybody, we're not making a decision tonight. I won't, I mean, there's a lot of things that happen. We can make a motion Monday night to accept this calendar and go forward. We can do a lot of different things. We can table it, we can, it could fall down the road for a day or two, we can wait for legis. There's a lot of things we can do, so the options are wide open on what we can do with this calendar at this point in time.
They are. The only thing I would recommend is that we do have some kind of calendar by March.
Well, that's why I was going to say, that's what I was going to say, when does it, when do we need to have a calendar?
For planning, you need to have it out there.
The March board meeting, be, because just, just for the simple fact that we want to get it out to, to the public and to the community and to the parents. And, you know, Allison does some financial things based on the calendar, and so I would, I would recommend by March.
Can I just ask one more question, Ms. Francis?
No.
Pretty please.
Yes, go ahead.
See, I said pretty please. I'm being nice.
It's called what the content is.
Okay, now we're talking about at the end of the year, the, by this hourly. We're talking about twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirty, thirty-first, and the first. We know elementary kids, like Ms. Francis said, they're going to be there, because we have, we don't have babysitters. And I'm speaking for me and Mr. Francis over here, and we don't have babysitters. So they, we don't send our kids to school. But now, middle school and high school possibility, that they're not going to show up, because they've already done their test. Now, I'm looking at the superintendent and the associate superintendent. When did we finish test last year, the fourteenth, fifteenth?
Last, last day. We, we test, uh, high schools are required to test the last five calendar days. They typically do first period on one day, second period, third period, fourth period.
I believe we're going to.
And then on that fifth day, they're doing, uh, extended sessions and makeups, so they're testing to the end. And that's state law. We can't do anything about that, regardless of the calendar that you all select.
They was testing all.
They're going to be testing, uh, uh, they're going to be testing toward the end of whatever we declare is the last day or the end of the instructional hours that we want to obtain. Uh, what you would do with those remediation and enhancement days is you could certainly require middle school and high school to remediate and retest, but that, in, in, in fairness to the conversation, that is not going to be all the students. And then, well, it's how good, how well they did with enticing other people there for STEM camps and JASP camps and whatever kind of camps is yet to be determined, you would not know until you did it. And it might, it might be awful, or it might be okay. You wouldn't know until you really worked at it and, and tried it.
I think last year, we got out on June eleventh.
But that's right.
Man, I mean, I would ask, well, what was the percentage of high school kids, was it ninety-eight percent there, because they had to test all the way up to that point?
Uh, they, they're there when they're required to test.
It depends on the day that they have to go test.
Yeah, they're there when they're required to test. Most of them are done at lunch or a little after, yeah.
But one, one other concern that I didn't mention was, um, I, I don't want to use anybody's name, so I talked to the principal at Central Haywood, and, uh, and there was a concern with, with busing accommodations. I, I don't, they're on the bubble. I don't even know if they can hit a thousand twenty-five hours.
I talked to Mr. Mashburn, and it would take rearranging his bus routes, because like, right now, I think he gets out at two forty-five and begins his day at eight o'clock. When you take out the, the lunch that he has and the four minutes in between, he's at six hours, instead of six hours and twenty minutes.
I did, Todd, the transportation director was on the calendar committee this year because of those very reasons, even before we, um, the, the count, the hourly option was brought to us. But he, he did say that he would, you know, he could work that out based on whatever calendar. Now, I don't know what that entails or what that includes, but that is, um, he knows how they have to hire buses, and so he was aware of that.
We could have an increase.
I, one more question. You said earlier.
Larry, no, you can't.
We, can I ask a question?
Go ahead, we can.
You said earlier, if we go to an hourly schedule, that we had an option to make up a snow day, is that not correct?
That's correct.
We, as a board, can put it into the calendar that if we miss X amount of snow days, we're going to start making them up?
We put it in the make-up weather plan, so, for example, right now, our weather plan states that we're going to take the first two days from the end of this school year. And then we're going to take the next day from May, March twentieth, or what, you know, we have a weather plan. What you would, I would imagine that you would say, and, and Dr. Nolan, help me through this, but I think what you could say is the first twelve hours or the first nineteen hours are going to be absorbed between May fourteenth and May twenty-fifth. The next six hours, we will make up, and so that will push the end of the year back, which is what we do now.
So we have the flexibility not to lose thirteen instructional days.
And you also have to consider the days that you have, like, early dismissals and delays, because, you know, those hours do not count either. Like, if you're on a two-hour delay, that's two hours out of your contact.
How did the instructions?
So at some point, there's a possibility, whether we want to or not, we might have to make up some time.
To get your hours in.
Get the hours.
What, and I think where the thirteen days comes from is, that is, if you miss thirteen days, then we're ha, we will have to make up.
Because there is some extra hours in most semesters.
But what I'm, what I'm getting at is, we can set it to where we're not going to lose
Thirteen days.
More than seven or more than whatever we want to, correct?
Right. The weather plan is, um, not a part of the calendar, it's, but you approve that as well when you approve the calendar.
Just one other comment, and Allison, you can answer this. It was, it was asked of me today at one of the schools, that the summer feeding program that we do, the lunches and stuff, will we be doing that again? And could we rotate cafeteria workers out to help make up some of the?
I have a hard time finding people to work.
And that was going to be my question to these ladies, how many of them would be interested in working during the summer?
We have, we open.
That's what I said, how many?
You're having fun with, I mean, that, that could make.
You know, that was, that was, somebody asked me that today. Well, question is, how many cafeteria workers want to work in the summertime?
Well, and we usually need one to two people per site, so it doesn't open up a whole lot of opportunities.
Well, that's what I, I thought too.
Again, I'll, I'll reemphasize that I believe if you start letting the calendar determine what we do in effect to the students, then it's the tail of wagon to dog. I've talked to, uh, a lot of, and there's some here, I know, so I've got to be careful what I say, but I've talked to a lot of elementary school principals. I've not found one. And they can cough real loud if I'm wrong, but I've not seen one, not talked to one that's, uh, just leaping up and down over a hourly calendar, because, especially in elementary school, you know, you're dealing with children. A classroom teacher's dealing with children from every end of the spectrum, from high achievers to those who struggle. And to, you know, in essence, some of them are teaching three classes at one time, because you've got advanced kids, you've got average kids, you've got low-performing kids. Now, all of a sudden, you've got the potential to take in thirteen days of instru, instructional life. I hadn't talked to a principal that's excited about it. I hadn't talked to any middle school principals. For some reason, they just eluded me. But, uh, but I have talked to two high school principals, neither of which are jumping up and down about. And that tells me a whole lot, because they're getting input from their teachers.
Well, we've got a lot to think about, and then, uh, again, like I said, Monday night, we can do several things. We can approve it, we can disapprove it, and then we, or we can table it for a while.
So we'll be.
We're up against a time limit.
You'll be placed on the agenda for Monday.
Yeah, it's, it's, we'll be on the agenda for Monday. Is it already on there?
It's not, but.
Agenda's already been sent out.
You can do the amendment.
The media.
Yes.
So this is the agenda this right here?
Oh, it's not, I can, it's right here, I can pull it up.
I actually thought it was on there for Monday night.
Well, you're talking about the school calendar and time for learning, that Board Policy thirty-three hundred is on there. But the calendar itself for seventeen, eighteen is not on there.
So it would have to be handed now?
It would.
It's not on there.
We don't make decisions tonight, but we'll, it's not on the agenda for Monday night.
If you have any other questions, just.
I thought it was, I apologize.
Feel free to call me or, and I'll do the best I can to explain it.
Mark Garrett, make sure the calendar is on the agenda for the March board meeting.
I will do that.
Chairman sets the agenda.
Well, I sure don't believe you did. Just throw it in there and run, didn't let you wait to work.
I think we need more time to study this.
There's a lot more information.
Yes, absolutely.
There's a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Good job.
And also, since we're still on there, some of the hourly wage people are thinking they're losing five days already. It's not the thirteen days that we've been talking about.
Now, they've already lost the five days.
Yeah, that was several years ago, but some of them's thinking that if we go to the hourly calendar, they're losing five days all at once.
Well, just all depends on how many days you decide.
And all of it, right, and all of it depends on snow days possibility, and if I was five nine, I'd do it.
Okay. Now, we have Joe Buchanan coming up about facilities, but if y'all would like to leave, you're welcome to. You're welcome to stay.
Okay, Joe, that's good. Just stay right there.
Take it.
Joe, that's good. We already know.
You got any questions?
Thank you, ladies, for coming. Thank you so much for being here. And gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, thank you guys for coming as well.
Because if you do that.
Want to be political?
Come on, sorry, come on. I'm trying.
Oh, we got plenty of time.
Because they're, but they're getting there.
Open it up, pump.
Hours.
When they'll start showing where that is.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started again, and, um, Mr. Joe. Carry on.
It's hard for me to follow all that.
Love it, Scott.
We've been talking about Bethel Mill and Jeff Rand, had discussed it. I've been waiting on bids. I got a bid back from John Bergen, pricing pushes, do everything. We'd asked Clark and Leatherwood and Brad Allen to bid it, and they declined a couple of them, and they're architected the draw. I'll have to build a ground on that and see how they would like to proceed with that, if we want to go back and get drawings or what. So, um, North Carolina Departments of Energy and Natural Resources contacted us about four to six months ago. There is actually a grant available for some school districts to get funds to upgrade infrastructure, sewer systems, water systems. Bethel Mill Sewer System has come into that red flag. So we are in discussions with them about obtaining a grant to redo the sewer plant at Bethel Mill. So I wanted you to be aware that we were talking to them, sending them information, so.
If you need any help on that, please let us know, because that, that right there been on the radar since we built Ethel Elementary School. I'm shocked it's limped along this.
They redone, didn't they not redo part of it? This thing's ten years ago or something.
Maybe just for.
Dean, you're willing to cover the whole grant, or the whole cost?
Well, that's kind of yet to be determined. They're looking at doing major renovations to it, and we're one of the schools, one of the sewer systems that comes in to qualify for it. I won't know much more until we get them all the information. They're the ones writing the grant. We don't even have to write the grant. All we've got to do is answer the questions they ask us for.
Who's the person? Do you know?
Did not. I've got it wrote down in my office, but I honestly forgot. I was just going to let you know that we were, that was something we were working.
We got a lot of help, I know, through some other grants on the elementary school. I think we should tie that in too.
Oh, and there may be other things out there. I'd like to see how this comes back, this, and then go from there. And it may be that it funds everything we need. Um, I know there's a substantial amount of money over all of North Carolina, but I don't know. and what's going to go on with that. If you've got any questions for that, I will move on. During our merger with Central Elementary in Hazelwood and June Luska, June Luska actually lost a computer lab and one of the things that we were looking at doing. And we've been this long trying to decide what would be best to replace it with. We're looking at doing Chromebooks, and we're looking at the ability to use capital funds to fund those, that mobile computer lab. Um, and I'll be asking the Board for input on that. I'd like to have approval to use.
So about seventy-five hundred dollars is what, what we're looking to do?
That's thirty Chromebooks for a mobile lab. And Ms. Arrington would be buying the part that goes on to it to match.
I think she's been trying to figure that for a while, so.
Oh, any questions on that? No. Um, I move on down. We did get a better quote on the box truck for child nutrition from Taylor Ford. Out the door was thirty-four, six, nineteen, so that put us substantially lower than any of the other prices.
So you're going on it on its way?
Yes, it is on its way. And we're, we've got to move money and-
What color is it?
What color would you like?
Crimson.
I didn't specify.
Orange and purple. You didn't ask what color.
I didn't ask what color. I just said cheap. So, um-
Anything, as long as it don't resemble Alabama color.
Um, we're looking at doing LED lighting in our parking lots and in some of the school systems. So I'm looking at getting prices on that and maybe purchasing those to do as summer projects.
Does Duke Progress have, uh, funds on that? I know they're paying it.
We do not take advantage of the energy companies' rebates because we opt out of that. That is, is it financial math you used earlier today?
Because of E-raters on?
Well, Duke Energy and Progress have two different funding formulas to bill you. One, you pay a little more, but you get rebates if you take advantage of them. Or the other, if you use so much energy, you get cheaper power, but you don't get rebates. We get the cheaper power, no rebates.
Sounds like a savings plan.
So that, that funding math, I think, or financial math you used earlier was the way to do it.
Those lots pay out pretty quick.
Yeah, but then I also, well, I know in a lot of businesses, they've been coming up some of these grants. They redid my business and all the lighting in it with, with new improved lighting, and they had a grant that they helped pay for that with, and I paid so much, and it was real inexpensive, but-
And-
And I know we're not participating in that, but I didn't know if that grants, that's a different-
There are-
It's a little bit different than what we're-
My next one is very similar to this. I had a company approach me two or three months ago, and we've talked to them, Snyder Electric, and Johnson Controls done something very similar to this fifteen, twenty years ago. Um, it left a very bad taste in a lot of districts' mouths over what happened. I'm talking to them, and it depends on what the Board feels about it. They have a lease program, they call it, that they will come in, give us a number of what it would cost to upgrade our lights, all our lighting to LED, upgrade our energy management system, and how much it will save us per year. It has to pay back in fifteen to twenty years, whatever that upgrade is, it has to pay for itself in the program. Well, your savings pays for that upgrade over fifteen to twenty years. So they have approached me on it, and I am trying to get in contact with other school districts that have used it and took advantage of it to see their input. I've not heard back from them yet. Um, is that something the Board, and, or have you got any input? Well, I'll ask how you'd like for me to go Monday, but-
Well, it would be hard to get some quotes.
That's why I was also saying, like, it'd be worth checking out.
It is a wash, so to speak.
Yeah.
So if it cost us five million dollars to renovate everything we got, and I'm just using a number, well, that five million dollars has to pay for, we have to save that much in fifteen years.
Yeah, you've got to talk about savings in fifteen years.
We did several years ago, and we did it with CPN, I think, but we had it like a million dollars that we just saved over a ten-year period, and then we had to pay the commission of it. It's very similar to that.
Well, this, if you save two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year, you pay two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. That's essentially how it works. So for fifteen years, twenty years, whatever it is, it's, I don't know.
But you'll have, you're, you're getting in contact with other elementary-
I am contacting other school districts. There's only six in North Carolina so far that are in this program. NC State is one of them, and I have not contacted the director at NC State yet. Um, I'm trying to get into a school system.
That long a payback is seem to high.
That is a long time. That is almost the life of the equipment. So we're going to pay on it till it's wore out, and then be looking at doing it again. But at the same time, that's a way to get a whole lot of renovations now, but-
I see your point.
But if you're, but if you're paying five million dollars up front and paying for it, and then you're not seeing all that, you're not seeing all that until after the fifteenth year, then you're really-
Yeah, but he's got, then you got new equipment.
Essentially, it is a fifteen-year-long period.
Come up with another big job.
Fifteen years.
You just bring it to us.
Fifteen years later, you-
We'll talk about it. I don't, I'm not sure I'm ready to act on it Monday, but I do want to hear some input.
Sounds good.
So, um, leaving on North Canton, um, they were out today. They're starting to bring that system online, our access control, and we were at the Cheryl Center today putting the lock on it, so we will be bringing all that online probably within the next week.
And the Cheryl Center will be within the next week. Tuscola's going to get everybody called back, talk to them, get everybody signed up where they can start using it?
That's my understanding, yes, sir.
Well, that was your understanding two weeks ago, too?
We're still working.
We met with them last Friday, and yes, that was the understanding because they're going by those guidelines.
But they still haven't called nobody back?
Well, according to Dr., to Ms. Fox, she has called back. Now, the ones that called on Friday when they were in pep rallies, she did not call them until Monday.
Okay. I'll check you in, see if anybody called you.
I called you, Stephen.
Did I call you? No, I didn't call you.
You didn't answer the phone when she called you back, is what it was.
You didn't recognize the number. Okay, let's carry on.
I'm good.
Bids on the water heater is listed, okay.
That's the bids. Um, the boiler that supplied that, the cafeteria and the locker rooms in the bottom part has been leaking for a while, and we're, that's the bids on replacing it with natural gas and converting it from oil to natural gas.
That's good.
So, thank you.
While Joe's standing here, I appreciate him bringing the Chromebooks to y'all. It was May, I'm the one that kind of threw a cog in that wheel, and while he's here, I'll be here Monday night, but if we can kind of find, get the feeling of the Board. Um, you know, this year, when the Board approved very specific projects for capital outlay, and that's what we were funded with from the county commissioners, and so because the Chromebooks were not on that project's list, I didn't, I wouldn't approve it. It's my fault. So I just need to know what y'all's thought is, like-
Where's, where's the extra money coming from? Where is project stage?
He's got the money, yeah.
We were, we were given six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, but, um, talking with Joe like there's a root, like a hundred-and-fifteen thousand, I don't think he's going to do that this, right, this year. So I just need to know from the, what the feeling of the Board is, so I don't hold up his progress, um, when, in purchasing things. Do y'all want to get to approve when he goes off that project list before, or are y'all good with, hey, you've got six-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, you know the needs of the district?
Isn't that in our policy that he's got approval up to how many thousand dollars?
Thirty, thirty.
Well, he does, but in past years, we've done a real generic, um-
I know, but it's more specific, and I think if he saved all his other stuff, that's my fault.
I just don't want the Board to come back on me in a year or so and say, well, Angie, why don't you approve this, when it wasn't on this project. I just need some guidance.
Could it go through your building grounds first and get it approved before them, and then before the main board, if it's anything other than what's in his regular budget? If it's an amendment, in other words?
Biggie, I'm fine with that. Everybody all right?
So we can go ahead and just handle it like an amendment? I mean, go ahead, because like I said, we're getting here, and we certainly don't want to hold it.
Well, you're talking about seventy-four, you're talking about seventy-four hundred dollars, right? Or is that, I mean, that total, seventy-four?
That was-
This instance is what she's referring to.
That's what she's-
But she's looking for guidance for future.
Yes, sir.
So if, let's say, I've spent all my money for carpet that I planned on using at Hazelwood, and Jonathan Valley comes up, and I think we need to buy carpet for a classroom, and I didn't have it on my original budget. Do you need approval? Do you want me to come to you for approval for that?
Well, I think we've got a policy in place.
So we're good.
Well, I mean, as long as you, I think we talked about this, as long as that money is there, and it has been approved by this Board to be spent by you-
Yeah, we're good.
Until it's over thirty thousand dollars-
You don't care.
I don't care, but you don't come, but don't come to me, and I'm just speaking to me because I'm a board member, don't come to me if you've bloated on this, and then all of a sudden, this over here needs to get done, and it's over thirty thousand, then I'm going to say, okay, why did you spend it?
And whatever you say.
He's looking to-
A county building, it's that sort of-
Tell them for transparency. Don't have to vote on it, but just tell them for-
That's exactly what he said.
That's what he said.
That's exactly what he said.
As long as you know that, that's true.
Now, this, just for the record, that's not a decision, that's in our policy.
Yeah, that's a policy.
Okay, we did make a decision not, that's in our policy. Follow the policy.
Just follow the policy.
Very good.
And then we'll be talking to you about it later.
Okay, any questions?
I think it'd be wise, as a manager, to inform your Building and Grounds Committee what was going on.
Oh, no, yeah, Joe, and it's-
And he always does.
Joe's been, Joe's been, and that's just like an eighteen eighth. I mean, Joe come to us and said, this is what I'm wanting to do, I'm wanting to make sure-
He's been very good about coming before the Board.
And I've been on that two board meetings, and I haven't voted no none yet.
I'm coming in.
He did let me know that if I, I come to him again like that, but I've not asked his permission on that. I will give him a month or two.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the letter that we received from the county commissioners and, uh-
You'll never know Larry Anderson said this.
We want just kind of open discussion about the letter and, and et cetera. Mr. Francis was going to lead the discussion, I saw, on the agenda, so I'm going to let him do it.
All right. Um, I hope everybody's had a chance to read this letter. This is the same letter that, uh, Mr. Francis had for us, uh, last month, um, to let us look at. Um, this did come from, uh, the Board of County Commissioners, uh, from Chairman Kirk Kirkpatrick. He actually was on the, um, committee for the retention, uh, and, and doing the supplement for the teachers, and I guess when they got back and met, they felt like, um, sitting in on the committee, um, that the supplement is definitely something that needs to be looked at and addressed, and that, um, we need to try to, to work on resolving. However, they felt like that due to the funding formula and what the county commissioners was already giving us based on the funding formula, that we had ample money to do to pay those teachers the supplement. Um, and that's sort of the, the way they've, they thought, but I don't know if, if we feel that same way because we don't have it. We're spending it, you know, we've, we've spent it, so, um, I don't know how they determine that, that we had enough money, and in the, the bottom of that letter, it says that since, um, they felt like we had the money, and we didn't, we're saying we don't, we, we don't have the money, that we were spending it in another areas, that they felt like that they needed to offer us to, uh, contact a consultant to come tell us how to, to spend our money wisely. So that's, that's the, the letter and, and sort of synopsis, and so we, you know, how, how do we want to, we want to respond to them? Do we want to let them, um, send a consultant in and-
Are they offering to pay for the consultant?
That's what I was going to add.
I don't, I don't pay, it's not, it's not addressed in here.
If they're offering to pay for the consultant, it wouldn't be a bad idea to let them come.
I want to, I want to throw a word of caution on that.
Say something, Mark.
I know, we got in our business. The, the comment in here that really is key to me, let me see if I can find it here. The Board of County Commissioners to take a hands-off approach to the Haywood County Schools budget, and I think that's the way it ought to be. Um, I don't like going to ask them for our lottery money because it's our lottery money, not their lottery money, but it does funnel through their, their fund. That's just the way it comes. And a consultant is going to tell you to privatize your cafeteria, your buses, I've seen it across the United States, and that's what happens. When you do that, then who gets hurt is your local workers, boys. And, and I'm very concerned about that because then you're going to be presented, not that I'm afraid of the results of that, I'm just afraid of the fact that, um, you're going to open up an avenue where they're going to be looking into our business all the time. And I don't take time to look at their business that closely, and I don't think that, we as good managers, I think if we decide that we want to do a consultant, we, we need to make that decision. It's my opinion. He actually was on the committee for the retention and doing the supplement for the teachers. And I guess when they got back and met, they felt like sitting in on the committee, that the supplement is definitely something that needs to be looked at and addressed and that we need to try to, to work on resolving. However, they felt like that due to the funding formula and what the County Commissioners was already giving us based on the funding formula, that we had ample money to do to pay those teachers the supplement. And that's sort of the, the way they, they thought, but I don't know if, if we feel that same way because we don't have it. We're spending it, you know, we've, we've spent it. So I don't know how they determine that, that we had enough money. And in the bottom of that letter, it says that since they felt like we had the money and we didn't, we're saying we don't, we, we don't have the money, that we were spending it in, in other areas, that they felt like that they needed to offer us to contact a consultant to come tell us how to, to spend our money wisely. So that's, that's the, the letter and jet, and sort of synopsis. And so we, you know, how, how do we want to, we want to respond to them? Do we want to let them send a consultant in and...
Are they offering to pay for the consultant?
That's what I was gonna add.
I don't, I don't play, it's not, it's not addressed in here.
If they're offering to pay for the consultant, it wouldn't be a bad idea to let them come in.
I want to, I want to throw a word of caution on that.
Say something, Mark. We don't want them in. I know, we're doing our business.
The, the comment in here that really is key to me, let me see if I can find it here. The Board of County Commissioners to take a hands-off approach to the Haywood County Schools budget, and I think that's the way it ought to be. I don't like going to ask them for our lottery money because it's our lottery money, not their lottery money, but it does funnel through their, their fund. That's just the way it comes. And a consultant is gonna tell you to privatize your cafeteria, your buses, I've seen it across the United States and that's what happens. When you do that, then who gets hurt is your local workers. And, and I'm very concerned about that because then you're gonna be presented, not that I'm afraid of the results of that, I'm just afraid of the fact that you're gonna open up an avenue where they're gonna be looking into our business all the time. And I don't take time to look at their business that closely and I don't think that, we as good managers, I think if we decide that we want to do a consultant, we, we need to make that decision, is my opinion. And I think we need to graciously write a letter back to them saying, thank you so much for your time on the committees and, and helping us on the funding formula and, and thank you for your generous offer, but at this time, we are working on other avenues to possibly fund this.
There you go.
Something like that.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. I mean, it's, say, this funding formula years ago, you was on the Board and several of us, and that's when we devised the funding formula and they did want a hands-off approach back then, they still want a hands-off approach. I, I think that they're, you know, before revision of the funding formula in their third paragraph examining their current resources, yes, we can do that and we can still go back and we can look at the funding formula revision as well as that. But I, I agree with that on a consultant because, yeah, they'll come in and those consultants gonna tell you, let's, well, if you contract this custodial service, if you contract your transportation out, if you contract this stuff out, you're gonna save a lot of money and you're gonna lose a lot of employees as well. And then is the efficiency there? We don't have control over that at all and that, that could cause more of a chaos than, than anything like I said.
And then they can come back and say, well, we told them to do this and they're not...
They can come back and say, we sent you a consultant and that's what, you're not, you're not abide and bite, so we might not even give you your funding formula.
We're, 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 we're elected boards, we need to...
Right, well, and I agree with Mr. Francis. When, if we need a consultant, we will decide it. But as of right now, I'm very comfortable with what our financial and our administration's doing and what we have done.
I agree.
With saying that, only thing I would like to say, and I've mentioned that this, and I'm gonna throw it out because now this is public, I've never really said this public. I truly believe that as a Haywood County School Board, we need to start looking at being a separate entity of the County Commissioners and have the tax authority to do with what we want. And what that means is, is when the taxes come in, it's not going to them, it's coming to us. Then Haywood County Consolidated School System will have the power to raise the taxes by a cent or lower the taxes by a cent, whatever we feel fit with our needs. And there are always pros and cons to it. Pro is, it's good because we're controlling our own money with the tax base, what's coming in. On, the bad thing about it is, is if you get a bad Board that's wanting to spend their money left and right, they don't raise taxes on the people left and right and nobody has anything to say except the public when they vote, oh, in and out, who's on the Board?
They'll be right here screaming.
Right, right, exactly.
Like, you raised my taxes!
But personally, I think that that is the way to go, is get away from that completely and go with having our own, that we have the authority to do that. And I know the National School Board or North Carolina School Board Association had talked about it a couple of years ago about maybe trying...
It's still, it's still on the forefront, Stephen, and Lee Ann Winder, the Action Center, is looking for districts that would be willing to step up and ask their legislative delegation for that authority.
Right, well...
In other words, they, they're looking for volunteers or guinea pigs.
Well, as of right now...
Is that a referendum?
It's been a, it's been a, a point of legislative action that the School Board has supported from way back when, way back. I've been on the Board twenty, seventeen years. It's always been in the forefront because North Carolina is one of the few states that the School Boards do not have taxing authority. What it does, like Stephen said, a huge amount of responsibility because then you're gonna be, when you're setting your budget, you're not gonna be here with nobody here like we usually have.
Right.
There's gonna be everybody here because it's affecting their tax values, it's what's coming out of their pocket.
Right.
Now, it's, you know, the County Commissioners are giving us a chunk of change and they're the ones that are setting the tax rate. And so they're the ones that takes it.
Well, it'd be awful hard to sit here and fuss about funding formula if, if we're not willing to take a risk and take the responsibility.
Right, there are pros and cons and the thing of it is, and I, I've asked Angie and I've got some information, the thing of it is, you've got a tax base of, what is it? Fifty-five cents a, for every hundred dollar or fifty, what is it?
Fifty-five cents.
Fifty-five cents of every thousand, hundred?
No, it's a thousand.
Per thousand, is that what it is? Per thousand? And...
Yeah, maybe fifty-five cents per hundred.
The County Commissioners, by a hundred counties, they fund us, we're in the top twenty-four, twenty-five, we're in the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth...
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth of a hundred counties. But actually, how much money of the tax money that they're bringing in are we getting? Saying that, like I said, I'm public now, publicly announcing right now that I would love to see this Board go that way, that given this Board and this administration the power to do that, and like I said, the, the North Carolina School Board Association has, has been fighting that and a guinea pig, but that's just my opinion, that's not this Board. It's not this Board, let me make sure everybody knows that. It's not this Board, but I would like to see that.
Well, we're members of the Action Center.
Yeah.
But it worked for us.
And that's one of those things and that everybody'd have to do the research of what, I mean, being a guinea pig, you're saying guinea pig.
Well, I think Ms. Winter would have the, the actual document...
Right, of how...
How it would work. And all you'd have to do is just get somebody to sponsor the bill and then it has to pass the whole state legislature.
Right, exactly, exactly.
And I would say that you'd have to have, the only way it would have a chance is if you got your current County Commissioners to endorse it with you. Because they're giving up authority.
They're giving up that money.
So, so they would, they would be, it would not be...
Boy, no County Commissioners...
It would be dead on arrival if I, if they weren't in favor of it.
I can already tell you, no County Commissioner is going to do that purely.
I'm not so sure that's the case. I think that if it was positioned correctly and, and all, I think that even throughout the state, there would be County Commissioners that would be willing to step up.
County Commissioners.
Yeah.
Not County Commissioners.
Okay, the last sentence or the last paragraph in the letter from, from Mr. Upton and Mr. Patrick, they're asking for the formal recruitment and retention plan in the near future. I mean, you know, that is contingent upon those ten slots that we might have to hire for K through three teachers. So at this, at this time, it's impossible for us to determine that.
I would say due to the fact that the state is still, you know, determining some regulations that we are gonna be, we may or may not be subject to, we can't do a formal plan at this time until we know more about what the state's gonna require us to do that may be unfunded for us.
Absolutely, thank you.
We answer those in that letter, the statements in the letter.
I would think we would need to respond.
Sam's good?
I do have one question. We were in our meeting we had at Dr. Garrett's office, talking about the difference in what monies we thought we had and what Kirkpatrick's number was.
What they're actually, what they're saying they're giving us versus what we're actually receiving.
I'm thinking Angie said that that was what we were spending, but we had pulled money out of fund balance.
They, they were counting some other funds that we were getting.
They were not, they were not considering the, the formula in itself and that's how we consider how much money that they actually give us, not what our fund balance is or not what we have to take out, but what they give us per child. And the information was, was incorrect and we sent them a notification correcting.
You did send, that's what I was...
I sent a letter out.
Follow-up on it, okay.
I did.
That's what I was wondering.
Because it was over a million dollars difference and if we had received that, then...
That's what I thought, so.
We wouldn't be having this discussion, right? Right, right. Okay, that's what I, I was...
But thank you for saying that.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna, first of all, I'm gonna call a meeting to order and then I'm gonna ask for a motion to go into closed session because we do have a legal matter that we need to discuss as a board closed session. So, call the meeting to order and I request that Garrett's made a motion to go into closed session, discuss a legal matter pursuant to this, whatever state statute it is. I'm sorry?
You want us to stay in here?
Yeah, we just stay right here.
Cut everything off?
And we have a second, we have a second, Mr. Rogers.